This Voice of San Diego podcast is sponsored in part by Competitive Edge Research. As a nonprofit news organization, Voice of San Diego depends on our members, foundations, and sponsors like Competitive Edge Research. We are very grateful for all of our supporters, and we will recognize their support during the show. Competitive Edge Research, San Diego's premier public opinion research firm, sponsors this podcast because they like good journalism as much as they like good polling. Since 1987, Competitive Edge has helped clients see the why buried deep within the numbers. Competitive Edge designs comprehensive research studies, collects bulletproof data, and employs robust analytics so you'll understand why things are the way they are. Competitive Edge, know what to do. And if you like Voice of San Diego's work and want to become a sponsor, contact us at
Thanks for joining us on the Voice of San Diego podcast. I am Scott Lewis, editor in chief of Voice of San Diego, joined as always by assistant editor Andy Keats. Hello?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Mm-hmm.
Happy New Year to you. Managing editor Sarah Libby.
Hello.
How are you?
Doing good.
I had an achievement unlocked for the family this week. We usually drive to Salt Lake City and stop in Vegas and drive from Salt Lake to Vegas such. And this time, we drove from Salt Lake City all the way through. We decided we just didn't want to stop. We wanted to just get it over with.
Woo!
And got the dog, the two kids, the minivan, made it all the way home. It was exhausting, but it was worth it. Felt good. There, I did confirm that there is absolutely no time of the day when driving from Vegas to San Diego is easy. It's just never easy. We've tried 12 different slots, and it's never easy.
They're good road trip stops on the way to Utah? You get a date shake or go to like a mystery spot?
No, we just go as fast as we can. But it's beautiful. The Utah section is gorgeous, and it's just like straight and clear. The Vegas to San Diego portion is like a dystopian nightmare. It's just like gray and dirty and congested. It's just, you need to put a high-speed rail link there. I'd take that. That'd be Vegas, LA, or whatever. Would that be a good idea transit?
Yeah, that would be a good idea.
Let's do that. All right. I don't know if that's going to happen. Sarah, I found the perfect opportunity.
Oh, God.
Nonprofit news organization, who, what, why, is looking for a volunteer, high-level editor, writer, and manager to oversee day-to-day operations in New York City and coordinate content from a wide range of partner sites? Now, remember, it's a volunteer unpaid part-time position requiring consistent hours and a long-term commitment. Who is this person?
That long-term commitment is like the real final turn of the screw.
What do you get in exchange for this? Is it the esteem?
Good times.
Good times. The whole journalism, nonprofit journalism world's a buzz about this particular ad. They looked up his 1990s, Peter Stern, a reporter in New York, looked up the 1990s. And the guy who founded this gets paid like $150,000 or $60,000, but he wants to hire somebody.
That's a big drop-off. From 160 to the number two position is zero.
Yeah.
I've never seen the term volunteer high-level editor before.
I know, it's very, it's ambitious.
Unpaid, part-time.
Unpaid, part-time.
Also, high-level.
Yeah.
Oversee the operations of the organization.
Day-to-day. It's, uh...
You're right, long-term commitment's the best part, though. Like, do not come do this volunteer unpaid job for like six months.
Yeah, no, you're in it for the long haul.
I just can't picture the type of person he is looking for that's going to fit all that, but good luck to him.
He's looking for Sarah, but free.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would you consider that, Sarah, free?
I would not.
Okay.
Like, you've done this job for six years. It'd be exactly like that, but in exchange, you'd receive no remuneration of any kind.
Yeah.
Not really willing to do that, guys.
All right, that's fine if you want to be that way. We've got a great show today. Immigration agents are just dropping migrants off in the streets of San Diego after they get through the initial asylum requests. The state is refusing to open the armorys it opened in the past for Haitian migrants. The nonprofit's taking care of those folks, and local politicians say, "We're on the verge of a major public health crisis if space isn't found soon." So, we're going to bring in Maya Sri Krishna, who covers the border for that, for us, to unpack it a little bit. Ooh, that's a big story put out right before the holidays.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. We do have another edition of The People's Reporter. Last week, Lisa Halverstadt picked off some of the most common questions we get, like why some people pay for trash pickup in the city of San Diego and some don't, why the airport doesn't connect to the trolley, and where all the lottery money goes. I can't tell you how many times people still ask me. I thought education funding was taken care of. We did the lottery. Okay, so here on the pod, the team's going to answer that trash question, and I'm convinced that literally nobody outside city government and like us understands that issue, the People's Ordinance, as it's called, so...
Even us, kind of.
Yeah, it's a little shaky sometimes. So, they're going to come in and talk about that. And finally, but least but not last, is Jesse Marks. He had a wild story this week. When Democrats won the 76th Assembly District, many chalked it up to the blue wave, but right before the primary, a woman had accused the top Republican in the race, Phil Graham, of misconduct in a bar. Authorities later said it never happened, and they are prosecuting the woman for a false report. Graham still came up short in the primary, and the story of how that all happened is fascinating, and Marks will come in and tell us it. That was a story, huh?
It's crazy.
Just like, what did you say? It was like a fever dream of like a right-wing pundit?
Yeah, just because it has all, it hits all the marks. There's a false accusation of sexual misconduct against, you know, a businessman. And then labor groups like trumpeted this accusation. And also, there's like a Mexican shell company involved?
Yeah.
So, it's really just like all the notes.
All the notes, so stay tuned.
No Soros, but otherwise.
Yeah.
Yeah. Stay tuned for that. We, uh, we're going to start, though, this week. We have news. Andy did a piece, and it was good about...
That's the news.
All right. He's a big fan of those kinds of jokes. So, San Diego has a new thing happening.
Yeah, so they, San Diego has a new Democratic supermajority on the city council, and it's led by maybe its most progressive member, Georgia Gómez. But now that they've taken office, the question everyone is asking is what do they plan to do with it?
We've asked that before and kind of made fun of the fact that they won't tell us.
Yeah, it was, we talked about it before the election a little bit, like when it was, those were the stakes. If they win this race, they'll do a supermajority. What would happen if that were the case? So, I, now that they did win, I went about trying to figure that out. So, look, Gómez told me that she expects, or that Democrats who voted them in, expect big, bold moves on housing and criminal justice. She did not lay out any specific policies that she was intending to pursue in those areas. She said she plans to flesh that out after talking to each of the other council members about what they might be able to get done in the next year and a half. Labor groups and environmentalists have, are pushing their own sets of priorities. And Gómez also pledged to me that she's not going to be in the business of surprising or playing hardball with the mayor. She's going to be direct and transparent with him. She will recognize when certain things just aren't going to be able to be worked out, but she's not going to drop surprises in his lap. But it is not at all clear what the specific policies the city council may suddenly adopt now that it has six votes. Sarah, what stood out to you about the left's maneuvering around trying to figure out what they might do with all these votes?
Well, there were a couple of things. I remember way back, it might have been before the primary, but certainly several months before the election, you know, we had all the candidates in, you know, virtually all the city council candidates in. And I remember pressing a few of them, Tommy Howe, for example, about like, can you give me one specific policy? And it's always frustrating when they really can't, but that still can sort of be chalked up to like, well, it's, you know, it's several months out, we're not, we're not in that mode yet. And now, like, you've been elected. And so, just the fact that like we're past the election, you got all the power that you could get, and that you still can't say really a single policy at all.
So, they didn't outline anything?
Well, maybe that's not necessarily true. I mean, Monica Montgomery has spoken often since her election about...
Supina power for...
Supina power for the community review board.
Yeah, so that's a specific thing, and that's really like the only one I can point to. But even like you said, apart from the elected officials themselves, even the like labor groups and environmental groups have outlined some priorities, but they're not really like big overarching like policy. There's just not a lot to grab hold to. There's kind of like incremental things that are their individual priorities.
Yeah, so like there's some stuff out there that I, that I wouldn't be surprised at all to see them move on within the next year, but I'm not certain it requires six votes. So, like, something that would, would fall in that category would be like a change to the city's inclusionary housing policy. This is the requirement that when you build a new housing project, that some percentage of units are reserved for low-income people, or you pay a fee, maybe that they make it impossible to pay the fee. You have to build the units on-site. Maybe they change the percentage, maybe they change the fee structure. There will, something along those lines will probably come up soon, but that was probably going to come up even if Jen Campbell lost to Lori Zaff. So, I don't know exactly how you handled that.
Let me ask you about another thing that always comes up. People mention prevailing wage. Do you understand prevailing wage?
Sure, so the city already pays prevailing wages. The thing that may, this may be extended to, is that if the city has some role, which could be very broadly defined, some role in a new housing development or a private project.
Like they support the purchase of the land or whatever?
Or, yeah, they sell the land to a private developer, they loan, even as broad as there's a zoning waiver, then that level of support could say, okay, now you need to pay prevailing wages. Which, so you could see that. That, that would, I think that would be controversial enough that not only could it require six votes, but it may be even hard to hold the Democrats together and keep those six votes. So, that would be one thing that I think would fall into the category of something that may be newly possible that wasn't possible under the old standard. But even that, you know, to Sarah's point about like they're not big, it's like, that's a pretty incremental change around development processes that may, you could support it or oppose it, but it's not like a sweeping new vision of the city, you know?
Yeah, it's not the kind of thing that I would imagine would galvanize a lot of people to vote for you because of that.
Yeah.
It might be something they support, but I just don't imagine that being the kind of thing that you like really grab hold of as a voter.
It's not like rent control.
Yeah.
Right?
Now, underneath all this is somewhat of an assumption or bias on our part that like big things are important or that they should be pursued. Is that true? Like, maybe it's just a liberal decision-making body above all these issues?
Yeah, or that they have some sort of responsibility to, to do something big, or that, or even that they campaigned on a promise to do something big with their six votes, which frankly, didn't factor that much into their public campaign. I mean, their public campaign was...
But I do think, if you contrast it with, you know, the short time that Tag Gloria was mayor, they passed a lot of really high-profile things. And so, it is possible that, you know, they could do really big things, and perhaps they didn't say that they would, but that doesn't mean that they can't if they tried.
Well, and so many of them had like fundamental change to the city and to the livability, the affordability, the opportunities in the city, that not doing big things would seem counter to that. But then you go back to like Bridget Brownie's interview I had with her, and she's the leader of the hotel union. She's like, "Look, there's very little government can do. It's all on the margins." Like, there has to be a wholesale, like change to the demographics and such.
Yeah, I mean, so one thing that Council President Gómez said to me was, Democrat, Democratic voters, our voters, our base, expects us to do big things on housing and criminal justice. Like, big things on any of those two areas are, you know, it's not a tweak to the inclusionary housing ordinance. That's not a big thing on housing affordability in the city. That's a small thing on housing affordability in the city. The one other point I'll make that didn't make it into the story, Dan Rottenstreak, the Democratic strategist, I was on a panel with him, and he made the modest but important point that if you have six votes, it's easier to get five. So, forgetting about whether you need to use your six votes as a supermajority, you may just be able to more effectively pursue policy if you have a vote to spare.
And similar to that is the kind of dynamic between Georgia Gómez and some of the other Republicans, including Kevin Faulkner. You know, she told you, "I don't want the mayor to be surprised," but she actually got support from people like Faulkner and Chris Kait, who voted for her for the same reason. And they said, you know, she's always been straight with us. And so, it felt like, from reading your story, like it was a possibility that there could just be areas where the mayor and the Republicans on the council would be willing to work with them, you know, regardless of the supermajority.
Yeah, I mean, one thing that she mentioned in that regard is that the mayor's office has been aggressively pursuing these sorts of marginal incremental changes to housing regulation, that making it a little bit easier here and there, cutting a little bit of red tape to build more housing. And she's been an active participant in that, and she expects to continue to be. So, she's not setting up an oppositional relationship between the council and the mayor where they have six votes now and they don't need him. If anybody expected that, that at this point would be a surprise because she's not talking about things that way.
Well, there was some other news in local, for city politics this week. Nobody has made more noise or hinted with more energy she was running for mayor of the city of San Diego than Barbara Bree, and she made it official. She said to the mayor's race, "I am in you." I had to do that. And she made an extra effort to, to really kind of give a stab, a shot across the bow, if you will, to Scott Peters when she said in her announcement in the past, "The city of San Diego leaders made fiscally irresponsible decisions such as mismanaging the city's pension plan." And I think that is, I think, not subtle at all. Jab at Scott Peters, the congressman who's also continuing running for the mayor's race. Of course, he was on the city council when some of the pension, the most notorious decisions were made back in 2002. She also said this, she said, "One of our priorities for San Diego is to move full steam ahead by expanding access to science, technology, and engineering arts and math opportunities in every neighborhood." I'm not sure what a science opportunity is in a neighborhood.
Or a math opportunity.
I couldn't tell you.
I mean, I know, I know what a school is.
Yes, I do, too.
I know what a school, I've heard of that. And in those buildings, they typically have math classrooms.
Yes.
Science classrooms, teachers.
Where there are opportunities.
And you can experience opportunities in those places. Now, the school, the city doesn't have a role in schools, so that's a...
They do not.
Confounding factor. But I also didn't get this sense that she's referring to schools.
I don't know what she's doing. So, they always do it...
Maybe like a rock. Like, if you had a rock, you could be like, you could describe the geology of the rock.
Yeah, maybe it's like a microscope at every corner or something. Look at what's here.
That would be great.
So, I...
I'm in if that's what it is.
But that, this drives me nuts because every mayoral candidate, Bob Filner did it, Kevin Faulkner did it, they all like know that education's an important part, that people respond well to educational messages, but they never dive in. They're like, they're never like, well, the city actually has a role over the charter of the San Diego Unified School District?
It's not entirely true. Bonnie DeMons wanted to expand the size of the, of the school board.
Yes.
With mayoral appointees to kind of overwhelm it with education reform.
That was, that's true. That was 2012.
It was one person who actually ran on like a...
That's true. That, and when you press them...
She finished in dead last.
When you press them, they're always like, "Well, I support it, you know, after-school opportu..." I don't know, like these things. So, it's like, it's like, I hope she expands on that. We'll, of course, talk to all the mayoral candidates and, and ask her what a science opportunity is in each neighborhood.
I want to ask one thing. So, the shot across the bow for Peters...
Yeah.
By bringing up the pension issue. Okay, point taken, I think it is, but it has not been the, the position of anyone in the Democratic Party since I've been here, that pensions are still a problem facing the city.
Well, that's why...
It's been very much a case made by Republicans, Democrats have said, "We have already solved that."
That's why it stood out so much to me.
Yeah.
Is that it was there, and it, it sort of sang back to what I saw Sunday Gover do to Brian Mainzheim in that Assembly Race, a Democrat attacking a Republican who was also on the city council at that time about that issue. And I think what they would argue is, well, look, the decisions they'd made still are affecting us. The pension bill right now is still, you know, asphyxiating other city services, and, you know, the reforms that they put in motion aren't going to have their effect for several more years. And so, you know, that's the argument, I guess, that she's going to bring into it. But yeah, that is not a natural sort of impulse for the left in the city to make, and it'll be really interesting to see if it works in sort of getting her whatever conservative support she's obviously aiming for there.
Right, yeah, I don't know exactly which voter brace, base it brings along.
I think, you know what, I think there was a lot of enthusiasm about her running for mayor when she came out for San Diego State West, that Mission Valley Plan, and in particular, that resonated with people like Tom Sudbury, the Republican sort of, you know, financial leader in a way. And I wonder if she's really trying to lock up what everybody assumed would be kind of Scott Peters' world, which is like some of these Republicans willing to support a Democrat, and maybe she's trying to make an early sort of run at that, thinking she has her left flank sort of, you know, locked up.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. They both have sort of a claim to this business-friendly...
Yeah.
You know, constituency. And if you go on the assumption that San Diego is turning more and more Democratic, and it's going to be a Democrat, you know, the same way groups like the Lincoln Club supported Vivian Moreno, like they're going to have to go somewhere. They're not just going to sit the race out.
The other, the other dynamic that's in play now that we saw very prominently in 2012, but not since then, is someone on the city council who presumably will be running to some extent against the city while, while on the city council.
Right.
That suddenly, all of her votes will be potentially linked to some case she's trying to make about which direction the city should go in, is the mayor's office, which may complicate things. I mean, it's not like she has a great relationship with Mayor Faulkner's office right now.
No.
But that may even complicate or exacerbate that.
All right, thank you so much to the listeners who donated Voice of San Diego over the last several weeks. The messages you included with your donations have been funny, sometimes inspiring, and obviously great reminders of why we do this. The point of a nonprofit newsroom like ours is not to have volunteers managing editors, but it's to tie our future to, you know, you, the community. So, it's the beauty of how we work, that we don't do well, or we won't thrive, and we won't survive if you don't hold us accountable and, and support us. I wanted to shout out to those people who mentioned the podcast on their donations, Nathaniel Webster, Amanda Keaton, John Dutch, Marjorie Garcia, Evan Banko, Susan Vega, Julia Norris, Robert Ito. You all mentioned the podcast, and that helps us make the case for the podcast, and we go through it, and really appreciate your donations. All right, on the other side of this break, we're going to have our People's Reporter discussion about trash in San Diego. We're also going to talk to Maya Sri Krishna about what's happening with some of the migrants being dropped off in San Diego, and Jesse Marks is going to explain his big story to us, so stay tuned on the podcast.
The following is a sponsored message from Interfaith Community Services. Voice of San Diego is a nonprofit, and a majority of our budget comes from listeners and readers like you. But we also depend on revenue from grants and advertisers to maintain independence and produce more of the hard-hitting journalism you expect from us. Interfaith Community Services is North San Diego County's largest provider of social services. With programs ranging from food, housing, employment, youth services, addiction recovery, and more, Interfaith serves over 17,000 of their neighbors in need each year. Headquartered in Escondido, their mission is to help people help themselves, and to do that, they need your support. Visit wwwinterfaithservices.org to learn more.
Welcome to The People's Reporter, a Voice of San Diego feature where we gather questions from listeners like you, then answer those questions. I'm Lisa Halverstadt.
And I'm Nate John. This week, we're going to tackle a question that comes up a lot.
This one comes from VOSD reader Stephen Barrett. Here's his question.
Why must condominium complexes pay for their own garbage and recycling service when they also pay local taxes just like single-family homes? So, Stephen, thank you for the question. It's a really common one we hear from readers, and Lisa happens to know a lot about trash. What did you find, Lisa?
Well, we can blame it on the People's Ordinance. It's literally a century-old law that's put the city in quite a predicament. Back in 1919, San Diego voters approved this. The law says that the city must collect trash from homes, and it can levy fees to do it. The thing is, for some reason that I really can't understand, the city never implemented that fee, so it's basically been a mandate that the city pick up trash from single-family homes.
And what about condos and apartments?
Nope, city doesn't pick up that trash.
Why? It's all trash.
Because about 30 years ago, city voters changed the law. They voted to end the free service for people in apartments. So, since 1986, which also happens to be the year I was born...
What?
The city has collected trash from single-family homes, but not from apartments, condos, or other private communities. Those residents have to pay for trash collection.
Right, yes, I do pay more. I live in a condo, so I've always wondered why it's different. Like, why would there be a difference? It's all trash. So, is this a thing that happens in other cities, too? Like, are we special because of this?
Apparently, we are special. This may be another San Diego special. I'm not aware of other cities that have this sort of thing, and it costs the city a lot of money.
Like, how much?
Like, more than $50 million a year.
That's so much money.
Yep.
Why?
Yeah, well...
So, does, okay, so why is the main question? Like, that's 50 million kind of free dollars that the city could, I guess, get. Does anyone want to change that? So, then we can use the $50 million for all the things that the city wants to pay for?
Well, it's been talked about, and talked about, and talked about.
Right.
A lot.
Yeah.
But I really wouldn't count on this changing because pretty much every time this is suggested, it ends up falling flat.
Because we'd have to pay for it?
Yeah, nobody wants to pay, especially if you're getting something for free.
Hmm, okay. Well, Stephen, there's your answer. It costs $50 million. It's a century-old law that was changed 30 years ago. People in condos and apartments, you got to pay more. People who have single-family homes, you don't pay for your trash, right?
Yeah, and also, evidence that people who are renters really should go to the polls. Things, things affect them.
Good backup point. Okay, Stephen, there's your answer.
Thanks for the question, Stephen. It was a good one. Okay, so listeners, we know you've got questions, too. Send them our way. We'll choose the best ones, and then we'll ask our readers and listeners to vote for their favorites, and then we'll investigate and share what we learned.
So, if you want to suggest a question, you can go to the website for this feature. That's voicesanego.org/people'sreporter, voicesanego.org/people'sreporter. Or you can always text us. The number is 619-202-9051. Your question could be featured in an upcoming episode, and you could meet Lisa Halverstadt.
Oh, yeah, quite a, quite a bribe there.
She's our eyes and ears on the border. She's broken many stories about what's going on also in the immigration courts. Maya Sri Krishna is here. Hello.
Hey.
You and Lisa Halverstadt had an important story about the people who are getting across the border after pleading for asylum, but what's happening to them now?
So, since late October, the Department of Homeland Security has been releasing specifically asylum-seeking families in two cities all along the border, including San Diego. So, effectively, what the Department of Homeland Security used to do was with these families, because there are rules about how long they can detain families, they would set them off to a sponsor, a relative, or someone elsewhere in the country usually, but they would review their plans to make sure that they actually got there and they had a way of getting there. And they're basically now saying that with the uptick of families who are crossing the border and requesting asylum, they no longer have the capacity to review those plans. So they're just releasing people in San Diego and along the border.
Literally dropping them off on the street.
So it happens a little bit differently everywhere. I think initially what was happening here was they would be dropped off near the Greyhound in Santa Cidro and that area. Then the people who are held and processed at the facility right on the border, right across from where the trolley is, from what I've heard from families and volunteers who are working with the migrants, is that they're basically just released from that building and just told to, like, walk off federal property. And there are some CBP agents who will call volunteers locally who are running a shelter for these migrants. Sometimes they don't.
Like, informally, they've built a relationship with some Border Patrol officers who are like, okay, we're doing this again. You can come get them if you want?
So I think that they have given all of the agencies, so Border Patrol, Customs and Border Protection, and ICE, their contact information and the number to the hotline. And then it's kind of just every agent handles it differently, so some of them will call. And right as of now, it seems like the majority of these families are being dropped off directly at the shelter locations. But it's always every day, they're unsure of what time, how many people are coming. And again, it kind of depends on what agent happens to be planning everything and how communicative they want to be.
Right, so several years ago, when thousands of Haitians came across the border in San Diego after their earthquake in Haiti, the state of California opened armories that they could use for shelters. But now that's not happening, and actually, there's a lot of local frustration among the nonprofits and some of the providers and some of the local politicians, that we're heading towards a crisis.
Yeah, so I mean, this has been handled at this point mostly by nonprofits who have just stepped up and without much additional funding from the state, county, or city, have decided to kind of make things work. And they have, in a little over two months, had to move shelter locations several times. You know, they're using a network of churches through the San Diego Organizing Project and other contacts to house these people. And so one of the things they were hoping for was a more permanent space, so that they're not constantly moving. So, you know, they don't have delays when they move for code issues, so that they know that every night, even if they get a few more people than they did the night before, they won't have to be worried about whether they have the bed space. And with these armories in particular, several local politicians and the nonprofits have asked the state to open the beganas they did for the Haitians. But it was towards the end of the last administration, and they basically said that "The armory that we used is being used for other purposes, so we can't really help you." But I have been told that those discussions may be reopening with the new governor.
So it sounds like you're kind of getting at my question at the end there. But I can see that there's one very obvious difference in Washington DC between the Haitian crisis and today. But the state of California shouldn't be so wildly different. What do you make of the reason that the state has been unable or unwilling to come through to the extent that they had previously?
Well, so there are a couple of differences. One is that the state government is in transition, which it was not two years ago when the Haitians were coming. We've also heard things, the Haitians, since they were coming as part of, you know, they were trying to get another temporary status here. They weren't asylum seekers necessarily, that they were sort of viewed in legal terms as refugees. And so they had temporary access to certain, like, certain public benefits that asylum seekers do not have at this point.
So one thing that was jarring as a journalist was that your story initially about kind of this brewing crisis to shelter these migrants dropped almost at the exact same moment as the state's big hepatitis A report saying county leaders, you know, really didn't do enough to address the crisis urgently. And some state leaders have kind of tied the two together and said, "If we don't solve this crisis, we could have another public health crisis on our hands." Can you talk about, a little bit about what some of those concerns are? I know some of the families that have come across have been dealing with chickenpox and things like that.
Yeah, so it's been really interesting to work on this issue with Lisa, who's done so much on homelessness and HEPE, because there's a lot of parallels in terms of kind of seeing a situation where people need to be housed and taken care of, who are really vulnerable. And there's a lot of finger pointing, and you see the same shelter locations being floated and some of the same calls from service providers who are on the ground for assistance and kind of making sure these people get the medical need and the screening that they need. And up until, I think, mid-December, they had more or less just been depending on community clinics and volunteer nurses and doctors to screen all of these people. And recently, the county actually provided full-time staff, so now everyone's getting screened. So it kind of seems like maybe they are learning from the HEPE crisis. There was actually someone in the roughly 4,000 people who have been released into San Diego in the past couple of months, who did have hepatitis A, but the county said that they have since recovered. There was also a case of tuberculosis. There's been several cases of chickenpox. There are a lot of children. And then also scabies, upper respiratory illnesses, flus, lice, and things like that. So right now, nothing too serious, but we're also talking about a group of people that have made a very long journey with inadequate shelter and nutrition pretty much the entire way. And so they're in a really precarious state health-wise.
And then is the county have any, anything else that they're working on in terms of locations? If the armory is occupied, are we doing anything else locally to address that?
So Nathan Fletcher and Greg Cox put an item on the agenda for next week's county board of supervisors meeting, where they have recommended several things that the county do. One is to continue lobbying for the armory and trying to push the state to do that. But another thing that they are asking to do is basically give county staff the okay to consider county properties that could serve as temporary shelter.
Maya Sri Krishnan, you're doing some great work on the border and following all these issues as they come across into the United States. Thank you for your effort.
Thank you.
I've been looking forward to this discussion for a few days. He's our investigative reporter and associate editor. He's got an eye on North County issues. And I think he's kind of developing an expertise at the story behind the story. You know, there's always these stories you hear about, and then, you know, there's probably a lot more to it, but then it kind of falls into the back in the archive of our memories. And he's been doing a great job.
I would describe it as "get a load of this shit."
Yeah, the "get a load of this shit" beat.
Yeah.
He's Jesse Marks. Yeah, that's a, that, he is officially now the "get a load of this shit" beat investigative reporter.
I guess we should have, we have to put a parental warning on this episode now.
Yes, he is Jesse Marks. Jesse, hey. Hey, thanks for having me.
Yeah, so you decided to look out at what really happened with the candidacy of Assembly candidate Phil Graham? So this was District 76?
That is correct, yeah. So it's mostly coastal North County.
Nostill?
Nostill.
Nostill County? Yeah, he, so that was a seat one of the Democrats won, and they had two Democrats in the final. A lot of people made that point, that the jungle primary thing worked out really well for the Democrats. But it wasn't necessarily an example of the blue wave. Maybe a Democrat would have won. But the major Republican, the leading Republican in that race dropped out. What happened?
That's a good question. It's a complicated, it's a complicated issue, really. So the overarching narrative was that the district is changing in terms of its demographics and that just Democrats were inspired by the president to come out and to vote for Democrats. But what we found is that there was a pretty epic pylon from all different angles in this race. And what initially happened was a woman from North County, her name is Nicole Bergen, made an allegation against Phil Graham at the 11th hour, accusing him of sexual misconduct, essentially inappropriately touching her in a bar late one night.
Let's stop for a second. So Phil Graham, tell us about who Phil Graham is.
So Phil Graham is the stepson of Pete Wilson. He had previously run for the Encinitas City Council. He lost. He's a businessman, and he was considered to be a shoo-in for at least one of the two spots to get through the primary this year because of his connections. He'd scooped up a lot of donors that other Republicans had in the past. And when Rocky Chavez decided not to run for the 76th again, it looked like he had a pretty good shot at it.
He got the support of the Republican Party itself, right?
The state party as well as the county.
And there was other Republicans running, Jerome Stocks in particular, a former councilman from Encinitas, also a big shot at Sandec, right?
Yeah, he was involved in Sandec, yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. And I think there were five other Republicans who ran total. So there was quite a few people who were trying to rush in through the door there at the last minute.
Okay, so the race is going on, the primary is in June, and then Phil Graham has a couple beers at the bar. What bar is this? We're in Encinitas, right?
So this is in Encinitas, a little dive bar. This is May 14th, the early hours. So Sunday's bleeding into Monday at this point in time. He strikes up a conversation with a woman at the bar named Nicole Bergen, the one I mentioned a second ago. She had done some work as a lifeguard. She was known around town a little bit as somebody who would go out with dogs on these rescues. She'd gotten awards, that sort of thing. They wind up talking about politics. She mentions that she knows Jerome Stocks. And there's not a lot known about what they talked about that evening, but that, there seems to be some consensus that Jerome Stocks' name came up, right? She says she's friends with him. "Oh, hey, by the way, he's also running. Isn't that interesting?" So sometime over the next week, after this conversation ends, and apparently they go their separate ways, she calls Jerome Stocks and she says, "Get a load of this. You won't, you won't believe it, but I saw Phil Graham in a bar late one night. He was really drunk. He was so drunk, he couldn't sign his credit card statements. And he inappropriately touched me and said these weird things." Why she passed that information along to Jerome Stocks is up for debate. We know that he, his campaign was at a pretty precarious point in that time, because it was essentially falling apart. His consultant had left. Donors weren't giving him any money. He was putting his own money into it. So she passes along this information to him, and he claims he didn't encourage her to go to police. He just sort of accepted it and just said, "Thanks, I gotta get back to work now," and moved on. But what happened was that Bergen eventually did go to the police department and wound up shopping around her story to different media outlets up in coastal North County.
Before or after going to the police?
It is, it is suggested in media coverage that she had approached media outlets before going to the police department. It's not entirely clear, because she won't, she won't say. But it is strongly suggested in some of the coverage, because she, like, she told a TV station ahead of time that this had happened and suggested that Gloria Allred was working, was working with her, who's like a feminist lawyer and icon. The Coast News, when they broke this story, a subsequent story after that actually mentioned that she had given them the police report numbers. So within a couple of days there, she's talking to people. Eventually, she starts spreading the word out to the press that this is happening.
Okay, okay, so then the story blows up. It becomes a big deal in the race, but the police start looking into it.
Yeah, that's true. And within a couple of days, it becomes very clear to the reporters who are covering this that Bergen has some credibility issues, some pretty serious ones. She starts giving different variations of her story to different media outlets, and there are different details that all of a sudden emerge. And when she's called out on this, she says, "Well, I was in a car accident recently. I just, you know, must have forgotten." Which is a red flag by itself. But more importantly, there's a long history in the, in the court database showing that there are restraining orders either against her or those that she's filed against other people. And within those restraining orders, there are suggestions that she's possibly made up reports in the past. So The Coast News writes a big story about that. I think that's the 25th of May. It's less than a week later. And then on the 29th, the sheriff's department comes back and determines that her allegation was not just disproven, or not just unfounded, it was actually disproved. And they cited surveillance as well as witness interviews, which is, which is, I mean, that's pretty extreme. Usually in these cases, they basically say, "Hey, it's unfounded. We're moving on." So they actually took the extra step to say it was absolutely not true.
Right, I mean, anybody who's ever written anything about these things knows that often you can't get beyond two conflicting versions of events. It's very hard to corroborate details. You can try, but you can't say definitively that they didn't happen. So for, so at the time, when those, that first range of reports came out, that the sheriff's department had said not that this was unfounded, or we couldn't prove it, or there's not enough to bring charges, but that what she said was proven to be incorrect.
Yes, which, which-
That's, that's a very high bar that is very rarely reached.
And, and that makes what came next all the more crazy in my eyes. Because one day later, you started seeing these advertisements pop up on Facebook. There was also a mailer that went out, and it came from various labor groups in California, essentially saying, "Hey, look, Phil Graham had been accused of this thing, and it directs people to a website which refers to a troubling allegation." So even though that allegation had been disproved, these labor groups were still pushing people to it, to read about it. And that happens on the 30th. Some of those ads were eventually taken down, but the website is still up to this day. You know, and this is six months later. And then it takes a turn for, for the worse after that. It becomes completely bonkers. People start getting phone calls from somebody claiming to be Jennifer Jones, referring to the allegation, telling people not to vote for Phil Graham, calling him creepy, that sort of stuff. Sort of playing up the imagery or the language around the Me Too movement in these phone calls. And Jennifer Jones is not a political action committee. It's not a person who is in the race. So these phone calls-
It's not even clear if it's a person at all, right?
It's true.
It just says-
And there's somebody out there named-
This generic disclaimer paid for by Jennifer Jones, and it's not clear who this person is.
True, yeah. And the calls are purporting to come from this company called the Hometail Network, which is based in Mexico. It's a broadcasting internet services company that actually does robocalls, but didn't do this one.
So this one I wanted to ask you about. So, okay, what?
Yeah.
So I still can't wrap my mind around. So there was a, there is a service that calls people from Mexico to the United States, but makes it look like it's coming from the United States? Or makes it look like it's coming from Mexico?
Not quite. So he's based in Encinita, but he has, his name is Conrad Braun, who runs this company. But he has a line on the American side, a 619 number that he uses. So even though he's based down in Mexico, none of this is actually coming from Mexico. It's coming from the United States.
So the calls come from a 619 number?
Exactly, exactly. But he's based in Mexico. And so what somebody did was they spoofed his phone number. So they had an autodiler-
This guy Conrad's number?
Yes.
Or that's what he claims, or that's established?
That's, that's what he claims. He has claimed in affidavits, he's claimed under penalty of perjury that this is the case. And he's been so cooperative with authorities. He was cooperative with me, gave me basically everything I needed to know for this, this story. I mean, he's been so willing, and he's so consistently and so adamantly denied it. I don't doubt him. And I've, and Graham's legal team has no reason to deny him, to, you know, disbelieve him at this point in time. So he says, "Look, I didn't, I wasn't making these phone calls. Somebody was spoofing my number." And this is what telemarketers do all the time, right? The number that you actually see on your caller ID is meaningless. If somebody has an autodiler, they can just sort of project where, you know, wherever they want it to look like it's coming from. And that's what happened. That's what appears to have happened in this case. So, so he starts turning over all this information to the authorities, to state and to federal investigators. And then he says, "Oh, by the way, this has actually happened to me before. I didn't really say anything, but in 2016, during the Encinitas mayoral race, somebody did this to me, and I was a victim of it previously." And he still has those phone calls. He still has those transcripts and all those things. But if you want to actually trace back the original source, you need to go to somebody who received one of those phone calls. And then you need to go through their phone records, and then you can trace back the original autodiler that spoofed his number. So it's kind of complicated, and my understanding is that there's a limited window in order to do that. So the question that is still unresolved in my mind is how fast the investigators worked to grab those documents? Because if, if it disappears at a certain point and the phone companies no longer have it, there's a possibility that the original source of these robocalls will never be known.
And that's the moral of this part of the story, is we actually don't know who sent those calls specifically. But it was part of this bigger, obviously, smear campaign against this candidate based on this allegation that's not only been disproven, but they're actually now prosecuting her for false reporting, right?
Yeah, she was, she was charged with filing a false police report, which is a misdemeanor, two weeks after the primary. So by the time voters were going to the polls on, on the primary day, investigators had already started gathering up evidence and unbeknownst to anyone else. So she's charged in June. And what's interesting is that there was this rush to cover this race at the last minute in those kind of chaotic final days, but nobody reported that she'd even been charged with a crime until September. So, I mean, it just kind of goes to show how people's attention just like completely faded away, which I think is part of the reason why we wanted to understand what happened here.
Wow. And so there is a coincidence in there that I want to underline. This guy, a very specific individual, not a class of people, not a competitor to him, this one guy had his number spoofed in just this way. This guy from, runs a company in Encinita previously. And it happened to also be in an Encinita-based political campaign a couple of years ago.
Yeah, and it's, it's interesting that, so this time around-
This district, you know, Jerome Stocks used to be on the Encinita City Council. So did Tasha Berner-Hervath, who was elected there. Encinita's is kind of the, the political center of this Assembly District.
Definitely.
And this previously happened in an Encinita mayoral race in 2016.
And it was targeted then at Catherine Blakesborough, who's a Democrat. And it was targeted this time at Phil Graham, who's a Republican, which is interesting. So there's no partisan consistency there.
But there is some Encinita consistency.
Yes, exactly, yeah. Something going on there, Randy.
Yes.
And so not only has she been charged with making false statements, but you said there's also state and federal investigations related to this? Can you talk about that at all?
So the FPPC is looking into this, the Fair Political Practices Commission, which is the state's independent, essentially, it's watchdog. They jumped on this within hours. To their credit, I've seen some of the email exchanges and immediately went back to Conrad Braun and said, "Give us everything you've got." I don't know where they are in terms of their investigation. They acknowledged that it's open, but they wouldn't tell me. And the FCC, the Federal Communications Commission, is also looking into this. I have some confirmation that, at the very least, they're aware of it, but they- I have some confirmation that, at the very least, they're aware of it, but they declined to talk to me, so I don't know where that investigation's at either, but--
One of the laws, obviously, at stake here is if you call somebody for a campaign purpose, you have to tell who you are and who paid for--
Well, that happened, Jennifer Jones--
Everyone knows it was Jennifer Jones.
Yeah, so fascinating. So then the question is, did this have the material impact on the race? Is this the reason that Phil Graham did not advance? And the primary Republicans, obviously, are convinced that, yes, that's the reason he didn't advance, and that's the reason he didn't win. Now, there was a big turnout for Democrats throughout North County. You know, whether that would have washed that race or not, we don't know. But what were your pullaways from that?
So he, Phil Graham wound up finishing in third place. He was about 4,400 votes below Tasha Berner-Horvath, and about 5,600 votes below Elizabeth Warren. And then below him, there were five Republicans. So he got about 23,000 votes. The five Republicans below him got about a combined 30,000 votes. So I think that even with the allegation made against Graham, if several of those Republicans, or all those Republicans, had dropped out and directed votes to him, he still could have won, very easily. And it's just in the numbers. Progressives have gone even further than that. Berner-Horvath's campaign consultant criticized the state party's mailer strategy. They actually actively, they spent resources to send out a mailer encouraging people to vote for Elizabeth Warren, Democrats, over Berner-Horvath, and they felt that that was actually a failure of strategy. Republicans, obviously, take exception to that.
As in that Republicans may have helped the two Democrats advance?
Yes, that is what progressives say. And obviously, that's somewhat self-interested, but there may be some truth there. They spent money to act, to actually campaign for one of the Democrats, because they were trying to potentially pick who they felt was the weaker candidate. And that suggests that they were so confident in Graham getting through the primary.
We don't have many good examples of the Republicans, which they've done often here, attempting to choose their opponent in the primary.
Yeah.
Panning out well.
It hasn't gone well.
They picked Filner, and they lost.
They picked Filner and lost, and we got Filner. Now, I guess you could say Filner imploded, and they got the mayor's office back, so maybe that worked, but I wouldn't say that. They attempted, ever so briefly, to lift Rafael Castellanos in the city attorney's[1748.28]